It's actually looking for the angel wings, but I can't find any. I found some that are not, you know, looks like a four-year-old did it. I'm talking about the ones that look better than that.
Absolutely. Alder Carter.
Present.
Alder Carter is present. Alder Abbas.
Present.
Alder Abbas is present. Alder Harrington McKinney.
I'm present.
Alder Harrington McKinney is present. Alder Skidmore.
Present.
Alder Skidmore is present. Alder Hennig.
Present.
Alder Hennig is present. Alder Tierney. Alder Tierney is present. Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Campbell is present. Alder Bedar.
Here.
Alder Bedar is present. We got form.
Thank you, and now we'll have Stefan read the script.
Thank you, President Carter. Welcome to our virtual CCEC meeting. We're going to cover a few basic items before beginning. To the members of the CCEC and city staff, if you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link in your original email. Members, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you are able, please activate your video and keep it on while you are speaking. The chair and staff are responsible for muting and unmuting committee members. Please use the raise hand function to indicate you wish to speak or ask questions. This includes staff who are being asked a question. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Voting will be considered unanimous. However, if you object to unanimous vote, please use the raise hand feature. When the chair asks for objections and a roll call will be taken. If you need to share any documentation with the committee, please send it via email to allalders@cityofmadison.com. President Carter, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So the first thing we're going to do is talk about item... Well, does anyone have any disclosures or recusals? I see none. We'll move on to item four, which is the discussion of the BCC survey results. And Karen, you're going to be leading that. And do you have anything to share your screen? Or are we... You're saying yes, okay. Let me unmute you, Karen.
Let me get you...
I've unmuted Karen.
Oh, thank you.
Let me get you my screen.
All right.
Okay, and then I think she showed me a way to make it. There we go. Okay. So I'm here to present the results of the board's committees or commissions and committees survey. And everyone is probably familiar with the timeline. Because of the changes that we did have to make in the middle, it was extended until the 6th. But we had a good turnout. Just to give you an example here, and you'll find all of this in the file as well. So you can look through it at your leisure for more information. We had 52 BCCs represented in the survey results. We had 234 responses. So, and here you can see which committees were the ones that were there. Who, how many responded. Here I got the current members, the current membership numbers from Legistar. So they're as good as they were when I looked at Legistar. And I wanted to figure out a percentageage for you, so you have a chance to see just if you're curious about that. So let me scroll down and show you. I also had a chance to organize lists according to priority recovery area. Because I know that some of your interest was in finding out which of those main areas the BCCs were interested in participating in. So you'll hear, you'll find here a list of all the BCCs that chose this particular category. So for example, here, housing as their priority recovery area. Now, I found that respondents from the same committee did not always offer the same selection. So they offered multiple options. So that you'll see some BCCs are represented in this list under more than one category. And that's just to give the members voice there. I didn't want to make assumptions about how to make the call. Oh, this is the one priority area. So you'll see that represented here. I know I'm scrolling fast. I just want to show you so that you're oriented. Also, sometimes they didn't, they either provided an additional area of their own in the answer to question 10, or they only provided an additional area of their own as an answer to question 10. So the committees you see here offered another additional area outside of the ones that were listed for the answer to question 10. And as I'll show you in a minute, you'll be able to look through each of the committees' profiles to see what their suggestions were. This is just to give you an idea of where to look for what. In some cases, no one who responded in a particular committee's membership chose any primary recovery area. So that is this list here. No, there were no areas given in that answer. So let me just show you how each of these is designed. And then that will be all, and then I can take questions and however y'all want to proceed. But, so what I do, what I have here is you'll have the name of the committee. You'll have the number of current members from Legistar. You'll have the number of respondents from that committee. Statutory responses, so, and this is by question. So at the very beginning of... Ooh. I just discovered something that must have gotten left out of this version. Okay, I'm going to send Lisa the updated version. I have another sheet that actually has all the questions specifically from the survey. That looks like it got cut out of here. But this is, this is based on the questions. So statutory responsibilities, there was a question about that. So I just put down the ordinance, if there was an ordinance, based on the internal committee center information. And then some committees offered some examples of items that they heard based on the statutory requirements. And those are listed when they're provided. Some folks gave examples of recently, recent non-referred projects. That was a question that was asked. You'll find the approximate percent of non-preferred items per meeting. And this is quite a range, because each member was able to provide a number. And so sometimes they're very wide range of numbers. And I'll show you where you can see the raw data for you to get a better sense of that. Approximate hours spent on outside research, also that has a range. Asking them to talk about which of those recovery areas they would like to be part of. If they had to pick, what would their primary be? As I said, sometimes there was disagreement among the members, so I represented all of them here. Then they offered some thoughts on how they could contribute. That was question 11. And additional recovery policy areas. So that the last question was if they had any other thoughts, okay? And what I did was I pulled quotes that I thought represented a range of the answers. But, as you see, I also provide the responses. So that you can look for yourselves and kind of look across the responses. Each line is an individual. When it's blank like this in the middle here, it's because they did not provide an answer to the questions. So if you see a blank line, it represents a respondent, but they didn't provide answers. Okay, so I am going to turn it back over and see if anyone has questions for me. I'm going to stop sharing here.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, there are no questions. I do have a question.
Sorry, I think Alder Hennig has a question.
Oh, I see it. Alder Hennig?
Am I muted? I believe I'm muted. Or it's telling me on my computer I'm muted.
You're unmuted.
No, we can hear you.
Oh, perfect, okay. Yeah, so Karen, I was just going to ask, you kind of had a lot of input on the survey. How did you feel the kind of target for what you were looking to get from different boards, commissions, and committees? How did you feel that that came through? Did you feel like you got the information that was asked to be received? And how did the questions turn out? Were people able to give feedback that you felt was something that we were looking for and valuable?
I was not involved with the construction of the survey language. I did input it into Survey Monkey. There was one thing that I did change when we had to make the change from going through the chairs to going to each member. I consulted with Alder Carter about how to proceed. And I did have to alter the language and the instructions slightly to represent that change. And I am sorry that that page didn't make it in. I'll make sure that you have that page so you can see it for yourself. So that being said, I was the one to do the analysis of the survey. And I tried, given the conversations that this committee had been having, I tried to make sure that you would be able to find information along the lines of what you were looking for in those results, if it was there, so that you, you know, something that you could pull out of it to be useful to you. I think that's...
Well, thank you. I just, I feel like we got a ton of information out of it. I feel like with a survey that had that many open comment and open responses, that wasn't, you know, multiple choice, that took a significant amount of dedication to, from the boards, commissions, and committee members to go in and fill that out and really give that feedback. So I was just, from my chair reading through it, I was really impressed by the time people took to fill those out. Thank you.
And so Karen, I just have a quick question also. How, given the fact that you had a short period of time to put this together, it was, I think it was on the 6th was the deadline. Am I correct on that? So going forward, if there, is there more analysis we can get out of that? If we give you a little bit more time?
I think that you, it would depend, I guess, on the questions, what you'd like to have done. If people have more questions that I can look in the data for and come up with, I'm happy to do so. Alder Hennig makes a good point about qualitative data. It has its own benefits and drawbacks in some ways. It's very detailed. And people did take the time to spend to provide, many people provided very detailed information. That's one of the reasons why I kept that information in the reports, because in and of itself, it may be valuable. And I didn't want to, you know, I wanted to make sure it was there. So I guess it depends. If you have a question you want me to ask of the data, I will happily do so.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for doing that. I really appreciate it. And we can always go back to it in the future if you guys have any more questions regarding that. We will go on to item five, which is discussion of meeting frequency. And so the question to the body is, do you want to meet more? Because this is a new body. And I felt that that should be asked of the new members, if you want to meet more frequent. First of all, if you do want to meet more frequent, I would say I will unmute you all so we can have an open discussion regarding that. And then I have other comments regarding that. So, does anyone want to start that out? Otherwise, I will.
I'm happy to. Looking at meeting frequency, I think once a week is, as Alder Evers sent out an email saying once a week was something that he would be interested in seeing, I'm more than happy to do once a week. I think that that makes a lot of sense, to be able to get updates in between council meetings and have some place for things to land in between those council meeting, meetings. And we've also had a number of CCEC meetings in recent history, you know, run right up to council meetings. And it'd be nice to keep them a little bit, a little bit more separated, so that we don't, aren't rushed at the end. So yes, I think a weekly basis would be my preference.
Okay. So one of the things that I was thinking of, and you guys can raise your hand if you want to speak on that. And that is, is that we should, it'd be nice to, it'd be nice to have, if we meet every week, it'd be nice to have one meeting as a discussion meeting where we don't have a time, well, we do have a time constraint, because we're not going to meet all night. But we don't have a time constraint. And then the, the meeting prior to having, prior to the common council meeting, which is an hour, to really look at the, any referrals or resolutions that come our way, that we can do that at that meeting. So that is one of my suggestions. I'm fine with meeting weekly, which Alder Hennig already commented on. Regarding format, how does everyone feel about that? Okay, I'm assuming that the discussion for at one meeting and the referrals...
I think Alder Campbell has a comment.
Oh, I didn't see your hand. Just one moment, Alder Campbell, as I look for you. I know you're here, so just bear with me.
You should be near the top of the panel.
Yep, I found you.
All right.
Thanks. Yeah, that sounds good. And I would further suggest that we even have it on the agenda that it could be a committee of the whole meeting, because as we can see, there are many, many alders here right now. I'm more, I mean, more than double, I think, or about double the CCEC membership. And it would be nice to have, to be able to have that more free-flowing portion of the meeting being a committee of the whole.
Okay. Any other, just one moment, I'm getting the hang of this. Alder Hennig?
Yes, so I would like to second Alder Campbell's remarks. But also, just being cognizant that we do, since we do have some restrictions on the number of BCCs able to meet at this time, I think that if we're going to take up another meeting slot every week, you know, every other week, I guess it would be. But if we're going to take that up, I think we should make it a point to that if there are issues or topics that other committees wanted to meet with. I had heard recommendations of the possibility of having other issues come to CCEC and have another commission that was looking at that somehow integrate it so that we aren't taking up that extra space and pushing out other committees that wanted to meet that would need that time. So I'm not sure how that would look, but I think that's something we should think about.
Yeah, well, what I would do, well, what I did for this one is to see if IT could accommodate this meeting. So I would have to do the same thing for June, to meet every week. Obviously, they're going to accommodate the meeting, the CC meeting that comes prior to the common council meeting. But just making sure they can accommodate our extra meeting. Thank you, Alder Hennig. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for those two suggestions. And we will move on to number six, which is the community service update on the homeless issues plan. And that is a presentation from Jim O'Keefe and Lynette. And, oh, okay. Jim, you're going to start out?
That's me raising my hand. Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Great. So, good evening, everybody. Nice to see many of you for the first time in a while. I've been stalking some of your council meetings, but haven't had a lot of contact with many of you. So we've got a PowerPoint presentation here. I want to try to run through quickly what we have been up to and where we're headed. I very much appreciate the interest that you all have in the work that we're doing and certainly understand your desire to get as much information as you can from us. So try to run through this PowerPoint as quickly as I can and then leave time to try to answer any questions that you might have. So the onset of the pandemic really exposed the deficiencies of the shelter system, especially the physical spaces of that system that we rely on to support persons experiencing homelessness in our community. These are, these are close-quarter spaces for those of you who haven't been in them. And they're unable to provide the physical separation, the social distancing that's called for in the public health protocols, about which we've all become so familiar in the last couple of months. So it became very clear very quickly that we needed to do something to improve shelter accommodations in the city. And the path that we struck out on, and I say "we," and I'm going to try to use "we" as often as I can, this has been a tremendously collaborative effort that's involved city staff from community development and plenty of other city agencies and our colleagues at Dade County. It's an effort that I have been proud to be part of, and I hope you are too, proud of the results. So we set out early on, understanding that it was a priority to move out of harms way people who were at greatest risk of this virus. And in the course of doing that, knowing that we would reduce the pressure on our shelter space, on the shelter system. So we began that effort by removing families from the Salvation Army shelter, done to protect and again, move out of harms way those families, and done also to provide more space at that shelter facility to better accommodate single women. That started happening very early in the month, the month of March. By mid-month, we had turned attention to identifying and moving persons experiencing homelessness who are, who are at greater risk of infection from that virus. So these are, again, I'm sure you're familiar with the criteria. People that are age 60 or above, that have underlying health conditions, heart and lung disease, diabetes, et cetera, or that have compromised immune systems. Most of these folks were transferred from shelter settings, but some of them came from unsheltered settings as outreach staff participated in the effort of identifying and helping to move folks into hotel settings. We also then set up new overnight shelter space to accommodate single men. We opened Warner Park on March 30th and can accommodate about 135 men in that facility comfortably and safely on any given night. We moved to acquire and prepare separate accommodations, again, hotel accommodations, for homeless persons who either had been tested positive for COVID-19 infection or more commonly, those who had exhibited some of the symptoms that are, that are commonly associated with that infection. So fever, new onset, shortness of breath. Those kinds of symptoms were, when they were detected, used to transfer people into what we again refer to as our respite center. And then, lastly, and most recently, within the last week or so, following the guidelines issued by the Centers for Disease Control in terms of supporting persons experiencing homelessness in outdoor settings, the mayor directed us to operationalize those CDC guidelines through her issue in some of an executive order, which you will be taking up, I believe, at your next council meeting. And I'll get into that in a bit more detail in just a little bit. So seven local hotels responded to the call for room blocks. Four of those located in the city of Madison and three in nearby communities. To date, so a snapshot today, we have approximately 385 people who are being served in hotel settings. That includes about 200 people who are part of families, so 59 families occupying most of two hotels. I don't know if I mentioned this a bit ago, but that is about twice the number of families that is typically supported by the Salvation Army. So those initial moves accommodated 22 families that were being housed at the shelter and about a dozen more that were on a waiting list. And as you can see, those numbers have swelled now to nearly 60 families. Other hotels are serving individuals, again, that we identified as higher-risk individuals, and we refer to these as vulnerable population hotels, currently supporting about 180 people in those hotels. And there is a referral list or a waiting list of about an additional 50 people that would be appropriate to place into that setting if and when rooms can become available. The medical respite facility, the hotel that we're using there, has served about 70 people in the month that it's been open. I think the census at that facility peaked at about 40 people. But in the last two weeks, it has been much lower than that. Census has been in the single digits. I believe that there are seven people being served in that facility today. And then we continue to support the congregate settings. So the Warner Park facility for single men. The average population at it has been about 80 men per night. It's varied from the mid to upper 60s. And I think we've, we've served as many as 108 men on a particular night. That is an overnight-only facility, as opposed to the Salvation Army Shelter on East Washington Avenue, which is now catering to single women, serving about 40 women a night. And it is being used, or it is available to women 24 hours a day. That's, that's a change from the normal operation of that shelter. Just a quick summary of the services that are being provided at the hotel. The Salvation Army is the primary provider of case management services for those 60 families at the two hotels that they are supporting. They are straining under the burden of the increase in caseload, but they are the primary service provider there. They are being supported, as are all of the other hotels, being supported by a local service provider called Focus Counseling. Focus Counseling has onsite staff at the hotels 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They provide direct service to families and individuals. They help connect people to local services that are available in the community. They are providing counseling services themselves for behavioral and addiction needs, providing peer support services. Importantly, they are connected to the comprehensive community services program, the funding source available through Dade County, and are taking advantage of it. And they work with families and individuals... to help them kind of manage day-to-day needs, whether it's filling prescriptions or securing transportation, whatever it might be. They've been a very big and important asset at these sites. So you've got the service provision provided onsite. Guests at these hotels are receiving three meals daily. That's not the case at the men's shelter, where, because it's not a 24-hour facility, dinner and breakfast are provided there. There's onsite security at all of the hotel facilities. There's onsite security, private security services available to support the Warner Park operation. At the Medical Respite Center, there is nursing staff onsite 12 hours per day. Those are contracted services. And they are themselves supported by Madison-Dade County Public Health staff. And lastly, Focus Counseling is also providing support to persons at the Medical Respite Center. They're not doing that onsite, but they're doing it through telecase management. As you might imagine, this has been and is an expensive undertaking. The cost for lodging, hotel accommodations, most of the support staff, the meals, including the meals at Warner Park, and security costs are running at about $1.5 million a month. And that's a number that likely has nudged a little bit above that as the seventh hotel has been added in just the last couple of weeks. Most of these expenses have been financed by Dade County, relying heavily on the portion of the $95 million in Federal CARES Act that has accrued to the county. The city has incurred costs largely in the area of setting up and equipping Warner Park in managing the intake at the hotels and providing transportation services, initially when families and individuals were placed in hotels on an ongoing basis out to and from Warner Park. City has also supplied personal protective equipment to shelter and outreach staff, and now to shelter users. We've also expanded the installation of portable toilets and handwashing stations in and around the downtown area, and soon to include other locations across the city. I mentioned, again, I think it's important to know that the Salvation Army is serving a much higher caseload than they've been accustomed to. The Beacon continues to operate at its normal hours, and Beacon staff are providing support to Porchlight Staff, the operator at the Warner Park facility. That's a new and budding relationship, I think, that has really been one of the side benefits of the work being done. They'd worked together, but they had not worked together as closely as they have recently. And it's a good, strong relationship that's formed there. And then, of course, Warner Park facility not available for other uses so long as it's being used to support the shelter operation. As I mentioned, in the past few weeks, we've turned our attention to supporting persons experiencing homelessness in outdoor spaces. I mentioned, too, that the Center for Disease Control issued guidance to local units of government, advising against disrupting encampments, but rather attempting to support them as best as possible as part of a strategy to reduce the threat of coronavirus infection. And so the mayor directed us to operationalize those guidelines, which we have done. We're in our first week of doing that, so we're in the course of reviewing sites where people are camping on city property and making decisions about whether those sites should be approved for that use or allowed for that use, authorized for that use. And I've listed some of the criteria. If you've had a chance to review the executive order, you'll recognize these are some of the standards that we're applying in making decisions about whether those encampments should be authorized for use or not. Wanting to keep some distance from residences, wanting to make sure that locations are safe to users, so avoiding flood zones, for example, or other situations that would not be safe. Wanting to make sure that these locations are accessible by way of public property or right-of-way so that people aren't forced to access them through private property means. We're wanting to ensure that, very importantly, that sites are able to offer safe accommodations for those that use them, and that they are compatible with surrounding areas and with other public uses. We have reviewed, I believe it is, a total of seven sites to date. Three of them have been authorized for use as temporary encampments, and four of them have been denied that status primarily because, those that were considered and denied primarily because they were either in flood zones or they were on private property. So under this policy, should you approve it, encampments will be allowed on city properties, city parks, or other city-owned properties. Nothing in that order will authorize or protect persons who are camping on private property against the wishes of a private property owner. So just as in the past, if a private property owner denies permission for that use and asks that people on private property be removed, that's what would happen. Nothing in this order would change that. But it's focused on city-owned properties and providing at least temporary authorization for the use of those properties. I expect that there will be, in coming days and weeks, there will be additional sites that will be identified as in use as encampments. And we'll be doing the best that we can to review those and make decisions that are consistent with the guidelines that are set out in the order. And then, with respect to those sites, it won't be the case that each and every site will be served in this way. So this slide is somewhat aspirational, but it would be our hope in the interest of making encampments as safe as possible for those using them, that we would look to install portable toilets and handwashing facilities. We would try to accommodate trash collection at those sites and would make every effort to try to facilitate the sustained contact with outreach workers, who are, in many cases, the lifeline for persons who are experiencing homelessness outdoors, whether it's providing basic supplies like food and water, or blankets, or sleeping bags, whether it's disseminating information about this virus that can help keep them safe, or whether it's providing wellness checks. That's something that we hope to step up and try to expand the capacity of our outreach teams to make that happen. So as I mentioned, the immediate response, though it has been effective, is not sustainable long-term. At some point, those hotels will not be available. Though I will say that negotiations are underway with those hotel property owners to extend as long as possible into the year the use of those hotels. And I'm pretty optimistic that they will be available longer into the year, particularly those serving families and the facility that's serving as a respite center. At some point, Warner Park will be called upon to return to its normal use. And we know that it won't be possible for Porchlight and their clients to return to the Basement of Grace Episcopal Church. And so the mayor has directed us to undertake a search for suitable site or sites that can accommodate that shelter function. Again, I think it's very, very unlikely that there will be a return to Grace, or if there is, it would only be to serve a fraction of the former users. We're going to need to find other space and set up other space. We also recognize that one of the benefits of the current situation is that homeless service providers have as much contact, regular contact, daily contact with individuals and families as they ever have because they are in settings that are much safer and better for them. And so we would like to take advantage of that situation by redoubling our efforts to move people out of those settings and into permanent housing arrangements. We'd like to expand rapid rehousing efforts. We're stymied on a couple of fronts that we're going to need to work through. One of them is the well-known shortage of available housing units. But the other is the relative lack of capacity as service providers are distracted serving the folks that they're serving now. We've lost some of the capacity to support rapid rehousing programs, some of the staff capacity. And so we need to figure out how to rebuild those and take advantage of resources that are available to us, some of it through the CARES Act, and do everything we can to place people into permanent housing settings. Some of that has been done. About 10 families have been moved out of hotel settings and into permanent housing. We'd like to do more of that, hope to be able to do more of that. And then, lastly, you know, we continue to want to pursue goals that we've had and work that was being done pre-COVID to establish in Madison permanent purpose-built shelter, both for men and for women and families. You probably all heard that the work around the Salvation Army redevelopment suffered a bit of a setback when the agency was denied low-income housing tax credits. I think it remains to be seen what impact that will have and what impact the current situation will have on their ability to undertake a capital campaign. But there's a very good chance, I think, that those circumstances might delay that schedule a little bit. They were hoping to begin construction early next year. And again, it's not clear yet if they're going to be able to stay on track. It's also not clear that the shelter facility that they designed pre-COVID is the one that will best serve their clients in this new world that we live in and will live in. And so I think there may need to be work done to revisit the design of that facility. But it remains our goal to support the Salvation Army's efforts to develop purpose-built shelter. And I think you know that conversations had recently begun in an attempt to try to make progress in also developing a purpose-built overnight shelter for men. We'll be looking to explore new low-cost housing options for singles, whether it's pay-to-stay rooms as part of a shelter facility or single-room occupancy. There's some interest in at least considering the use of hotels or motels that might be going out of business to see if they could be acquired and put to use. So those will be among a number of strategies that will be considered. We certainly intend to continue the work that we've been doing through the Affordable Housing Fund to add additional affordable housing units, including more that serve that very low-income threshold. The decisions that were made a couple of weeks ago by WIDA to award tax credits to seven Madison developments will add almost 550 new housing units, about 480 of which will be affordable. So we want to continue to support additional projects. And then I think, the last point that we wanted to make, in addition to this pandemic exposing the deficiencies in the physical structure of the homeless services system, it's also, I think, laid bare for all to see what those of us who have worked in the system know all too well, which is that we're also very deficient in terms of our ability to provide support services to those who need assistance to stabilize their housing situations. And so just as we need to find answers to the physical facility piece, so too do we need to find answers to funding support services. So I'm going to stop there. And I imagine that you'll have questions, and between Lynette and I, we'll do our best to try to answer them.
Thank you, President Carter. Jim, thank you for all that good information. I appreciate what you're doing in the current situation and your plans for the intermediate and long-term future. I just have a quick question about the temporary permissible encampments. You mentioned that maybe four of the current encampments don't meet those criteria. If they were on private property, I could imagine that those folks might be encouraged to move along. But if they're on public property, and let's say they're closer than 500 feet to residences or don't meet one of the other criteria, what's the current policy with regard to either looking the other way or pushing those people out? What's happening with those types of encampments?
As you might imagine, I mean, we are really trying through this policy to As you might imagine, I mean, we are really trying through this policy to walk a very fine line between trying to avoid disrupting encampments where they are. Encampments in Madison, I think you all know, is not a new phenomenon. What's new, I think, is a formalization of the policy that, at least temporarily, the city is going to choose to curtail its enforcement of some of the ordinances that are in place that address the use of parks or city spaces. So let me start with private property. We are not going to be actively looking to move people off of private property unless the owner of that property makes that request. And typically, they do that by contacting the Madison Police. In situations where there is such a complaint and there is a desire to move people, I think it would be our posture to try to connect through our outreach teams with those folks to let them know that they're being asked to move and to do what we can to help them find other alternatives that would be located in areas that are approved. When those locations are on public property, so in one case, there is a situation where a handful of campers are occupying Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation right-of-way. So that is one of the four that was brought to our attention for which we denied authorization as a temporary permissible encampment. But that doesn't mean that we would move against those people using that site unless, in this case, the Department of Transportation made that request. With respect to the city, it is not our intent, I don't think it's the intent of the mayor's executive order, that we would ask people who are in park or other city-owned settings to move along. As a matter of course, if those sites haven't been authorized, maybe they haven't been brought to our attention. So it's a somewhat passive approach in that we're not going out looking to identify each and every site in the area. When they are brought to our attention, we will respond to them. And in the case of an encampment on a city-owned property, I think the only time that, or the only occasions for which we would seek to relocate people would be these. Either we deem that that site is unsafe, it's in a flood zone, and one of the four sites that I mentioned was in a flood zone, so people are being asked to move from it, or in other situations where the encampment draws complaints from residents, either because of location or because of behavioral activity or other types of disruption that are occurring. So we'll respond to that. But we won't, as a matter of course, go out and check each and every site for whether it's been approved or not, and take action unless there's reason to do that.
Just a follow-up. At the non-TPE sites, will those people have access to perhaps some of the services that TPE sites will have, if possible?
The policy as it stands today, Alder Heck, is that we would not provide, we certainly wouldn't look to provide portable toilets or handwashing facilities, or refuse garbage receptacles or collection. I think we would continue to support the maintenance of contacts with outreach teams. But we wouldn't support those sites through some of the other measures that I've described.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Alder Abbas. Do you have a question?
Yes, thank you very much. Thanks, Jim and Lynette, for being here and giving a detailed presentation. I have two questions. First is my question about encampment and follow-up of Alder Heck's question. So if the encampments are in the city property, are we providing them social services as well? And in what type of services they are getting besides handwash, other stuff like mental health services and emotional services?
So most of what is provided in those settings is the connections through outreach. So there are a number of agencies that provide outreach services. Some of them, I'm thinking of Sankofa in particular, does provide direct services. I can't tell you, maybe Lynette can, the level of which people in encampments receive those services. I suspect that it is not very frequent. Lynette, do you have anything else to add to that? Looks like she does.
Yeah, let me find her.
Your own muted, Lynette.
There you go, Lynette.
Thanks. So yeah, I just want to give you an overview of what outreach looks like for the city. So we do have a few outreach contracts. But one, a lot of our outreach teams also have high-risk or vulnerable people that were on those outreach teams. So some of the outreach that we relied on, pre-COVID, are not going out there right now. So in the downtown area, we had a lot of volunteer organizations or grassroots organizations, like Friends of the State Street, Family. We had Mach One, which was really focused on medical, that when COVID originally hit, their boards decided not to send their volunteers out into the community. So we were really relying on our city contracted agencies to go out there. On the downtown area, we had Sankofa focusing on unsheltered in that area. But then for remote campers, really, that is about three people for all of Dane County. So we have Porchlight. And again, they have one individual who is going out and making rounds, because other outreach workers fall into that higher-risk category themselves, Capitularian, which is an organization that does have a lot of extensive understanding of mental health. And so they're now partnering with Porchlight outreach worker to start going and targeting some of these locations. To boost up outreach, we did ask for redeployment of city staff to come and provide some of those support services. So the outreach workers who have the experience of those social services and, you know, like more of the trauma-informed care and those skills can really focus on, you know, providing that interaction where some of the city staff that have been redeployed can just work on other things that outreach does of supplying the basic needs and supplies. So we're working on getting those cities trained so that we can get them out in the fields. So we have more robust, especially as the encampments are going to become more visible. Once the executive order was released, more people are starting to talk about where some of the encampments are. But we quickly want to get more robust services going so we can get more interaction with some of these encampments. We're also starting to work with some of those grassroots organizations that are starting to kind of bring their volunteers back into the fold of working on giving them that personal protection equipment, so the volunteers can get back into the field and offer that much-needed support. So we can get more social services for the unsheltered.
Just on that one, I want to add one last thing, because I don't think I said this at the outset, that priority one for our outreach teams continues to be with respect to people in encampments, to encourage them to take advantage of the resources that have been set up, whether it is, if they meet the criteria, taking advantage of the vulnerable population hotels, or whether it's taking advantage of the congregate shelter settings, which are much improved to what they have been. But we recognize that some people either don't want to or are unable to take advantage of those options. But that's where we start with outreach.
Really appreciate all the details. And one follow-up question regarding outreach expense with different stakeholders. Who's paying for that?
So we have contracts with several agencies. I believe that Dane County also has contracts, but I'm less certain of that. And I'm waiting to see a head nod or a head shake. It's a head shake. So Lynette, if you want to add?
Sure, sure. Yeah. So outreach is mostly paid for by the City of Madison. And then with grassroots organizations who are volunteers, the county does not pay for any of the outreach services. And then the city right now, in looking at the personal protection equipment, and then creating hygiene supplies, that is coming through the City of Madison as well, through the engineering department, is really helping us organize. And I can't say enough, like, that has been extremely helpful. Because, you know, when this was all first happening, outreach almost stopped immediately because these outreach workers didn't have access to that PPE equipment. And so for our engineering department to get them those face shields and starting to get them masks, help them kind of, you know, get back out into the streets to interact with individuals. And then our engineering department also put together hygiene kits. So that is hand sanitizer, you know, water, socks, you know, just some basic needs, so that people can, you know, use that to engage with people, to start that conversation of, you know, what do you need? How can I help you provide those services? To get them connected to, as Jim said, shelter or a hotel setting, to remove them from the encampments.
Thanks. One question about the long-term plan. So we know Salvation Army didn't receive WIDA funding. They might, I'm just doing a speculation here, they might apply again for WIDA funding this year. So we are not sure either if they get, if they get again or not. There's a lot of uncertainty with that. So let's say, if, assumption-based, if they get WIDA funding, the project moves forward next year. Where we see ourselves with capacity? I know long-term, Jim mentioned in the presentation, like, we need to see about facility-wise. Does that also cover, how much that gives us the room for the city or county or state? How much more we need if that facility is 100% operational as far as its design?
Well, again, I think the Salvation Army may need to go back to the drawing board with their shelter, because it was designed before social distancing was part of the lexicon. And it may well be that the shelter that they designed will not work. And so they may need additional space. They might need a larger footprint at their site. So I think this really presents an opportunity, if not a need, for us, the community, to sort of revisit our shelter needs. I don't think anybody believes that there will never be a need for overnight shelter, emergency shelter. The question about capacity, how much shelter space do we need, is influenced by a whole host of different factors, but not least of which is the availability of permanent housing. So I know I'm not directly answering your question, but I think that conversations need to be had. And the mayor is asking us to have those conversations with shelter providers, to think about where we go from here. Maybe it's a completely different configuration. We've often, we've thought about one shelter for single men, and another shelter for women and families. Perhaps there are other ways to come at this. So she's really encouraging us to engage these agencies and to be creative and kind of take advantage of this opportunity, to devise solutions that make sense for the longer term.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Let me see, who's next? Alder Hennig.
So I was looking, yep, I was just looking at the first couple of slides you were looking at, had the seven hotels under contract, and looking at the capacities. What's our total capacity for housing individuals overnight right now? And what percentage of that is full?
In terms of hotel capacity, I believe that we are either at or near capacity in terms of room blocks that are currently under control with Dane County. The medical respite center is about a 70-bed facility. So at present, it is being very lightly used, which is a good thing. The single women's shelter at the Salvation Army can accommodate 40 to 45 women, so it is at or near capacity. And at Warner Park, I think we can comfortably accommodate and safely accommodate 135, maybe a few more, men in that location. And so we have some unused capacity there. I know that other hotel properties, from time to time in the past few weeks, have approached Dane County. Some of them have signed on, and some of them have backed away when they've learned more about how the properties were intended to be used. So I would say that with respect to families and higher-risk individuals, that we're pretty close to capacity, except for the respite facility. And we're near capacity for single women. And we've got some room to add folks for single men.
Heck, do you have any more questions, or are you done? Okay.
There we go. Yep, sorry, I'm muting in between because I've got lots of background noise.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Oh, okay, sorry about that.
Yep. So the follow up question on that was, on the respite side, whether people have been diagnosed for COVID or have symptoms, are we moving towards now that we've got a higher capacity of testing? Are we, are we doing more testing on that front to get a better handle on what the prevalence is?
So everybody now that is referred to the, to the respite facility is tested. That's a relatively small number of people, so that's not, that's not very responsive to your question. We have had, just in the last couple of days, conversations, we've initiated conversations with our colleagues in the public health department about how we might do mass testing of persons experiencing homelessness. It is, as you might imagine, a logistical challenge. We've inquired about the possibility of bringing testing to venues where people are assembled, rather than trying to figure out how to to transport people to the Alliant Center. So we've just, we've just begun those conversations. I don't think that anything is going to happen quickly. But there are, there are logistical challenges having to do with the availability of transit services, the hours of operation of that facility not lining up very well with the hours where the clients that we're serving, at least at their shelters, are readily available coming together. I think the, I think the ideal arrangement would be to try to find a way to take those testing services to a different location. And I just don't know how likely it is that that can happen.
And looking at, at capacity, how, what kind of a curve have we seen increase of use of these facilities? And do we anticipate that curve going up? Or have we started to see it plateau? You know, just thinking about anticipation of, do we need to be looking at continuing this, the current level that we're providing? Or do we need to be looking at this increasing? Not only due to individuals experiencing homelessness because of various other reasons, but now looking at some of the financial issues that are, that are coming about? Or an anticipation of the end of the moratorium on evictions, things like that? What kind of an influx do you think we're going to see? I know that's a hard question.
Well, we have, we have seen a surge in the number of families being served. I said earlier that typically the Salvation Army would, would be supporting 22 families at their shelter and might have another 10 to 12 that, that were being supported perhaps through case management, but, but needing shelter services and having to wait to a point now where there are nearly 60 families served. So, so that number has steadily grown, as has the, the number of people being served in the vulnerable population hotels. We have a, we have a waiting list that we can't quite seem to work down to zero, even as rooms are added and people are moved off that list. There are, there are new people who are, who are contacting us and needing shelter. I don't think any of us think, though, that shelter is a long term solution to this. The long term solution is to figure out a way to provide permanent housing accommodations, permanent housing solutions. And that's where we would continue to place most of our, our effort and our resources, hoping that shelter use would be rare and, and, and brief when it, when it's needed. Lastly, Alder Hennig, with respect to the respite facility, it's anybody's guess. We feel very fortunate to date that we have not needed to use anywhere near the capacity that that hotel provides to us. But we're only one exposure, one person who's infected, finding their way into a shelter setting and and causing that virus to spread away from really needing to ramp that, that facility up. So we expect that that's going to be needed for the longer term, or at least until a vaccine can be developed and deployed. But we're hopeful that we can, can continue to, through some of the other things that we're doing, things like actively screening at shelter locations as part of the intake process, to identify folks who either have been infected or who may be infected and make sure that they're not brought into the, into the general population of, of others at those venues.
I just want to add one thing on, on the increased capacity or future increased capacity of shelter. You know, today we're talking about our homeless strategies, but for anyone that ever talks, you know, in our, in housing, we have a variety of strategies, right? So we, we're not talking today about what are we looking at expanding for eviction prevention services? So people don't get into this situation. We're not talking about the diversion services that are currently very successful at Salvation Army. And they just reported to us that about 50 families are calling in and they're diverting a majority of those families away from the shelter system. So, you know, we have, and then also, you know, with our new units coming online, we have those partnerships and connections with our service providers, like The Road Home, who are, you know, moving people out of homelessness and into those, you know, especially our tax credit units that are starting to be completed in this, in this last round. So, you know, we, we look at all of those strategies across the board and really look at how we can ramp each of those up, so we don't see that increase in, you know, the shelter use once some of the moratoriums start getting lifted and that kind of stuff. It's, it's multiple different approaches and strategies that we take to just this homeless, ending homeless goal, or preventing homeless.
Alder Hennig, are you, do you have any more?
And, and I just wanted to clarify, I'm looking at an increase. I, I'm, I'm understanding that, that that's an increase. But what I'm looking at is, is, are you seeing a curve? Or is it, have we flattened the curve there too? You know, looking at it on that front. And I think you answered my question that we're seeing a pretty consistent increase and it's not necessarily a very steep curve on that front. So, thank you.
Okay. Alder Attorney, do you still have questions?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Okay.
You know, I, yesterday, I know during the Transportation Commission, we had a report on the metro and was largely put together before the Supreme Court decision yesterday. And so I guess one question is, you know, unfortunately with the Supreme Court decision, it seems very likely we can see a spike, even though Dane County and other counties are maintaining responsible policies. You know, we're, we're, we're very likely to see a surge in the number of cases. And unfortunately, people travel to our city and probably will probably have a lot to contend with two, three weeks from now, once again. So I guess in two to three weeks, do, are we going to have a need to like really go back to square one in terms of redeveloping plans, approaches, you know, in terms of vulnerable populations that we are now able to have in hotels? Are we going to have to then go to those hotels and say, well, you know, can we have people there through the summer and early fall? You know, I just, like a lot of other people, I guess I'm dumbfounded by the Supreme Court decision yesterday. It was a disaster for public health and people are going to be killed because of it. But I guess we, the reality is we're going to have to try to pick up the pieces and figure out what to do. So I'm, I'm just kind of wondering about what the, the game plan is for the, unfortunately, the likely scenario that's created by the court decision yesterday. That was my main question.
Well, Alder Attorney, the, I think the county, and again, the, the resource that they are drawing on to support our hotel strategy is the, the funding that they've received from, through the Federal Cares Act. At this point, those funds are available only through the end of the year. And I think it is the county's goal to try to sustain the, the arrangements that they currently have with those seven hotels and perhaps more if, if they are needed as, as long as possible through the course of this year. And I, I suspect their, their success is going to hinge, at least in part, on the degree to which there is a return to normalcy and and those hotels might be, you know, pressed into service to do what hotels normally do. I, I don't, personally, I don't think that there's a very strong likelihood of that in the, probably for, for the better part of this year. But it, it is the goal to, to use that resource for as long as it, as it's available, including applying it to support hotel strategies. And I, and I think that there has been enough interest expressed by other hotel properties to at least give us hope that if there was a need for additional hotel space, that, that it might be possible to secure it.
Alder Attorney, do you have a follow up question?
No, I'd just make a comment that,
Sure.
You know, I am, since this all began, I, I, I think that we can be very proud of the city staff that we have and the phenomenal job that they do each and every day. It's exceptionally competent and caring. And I, I know it probably doesn't get said enough, but it's really outstanding, the, the folks that we have in place and, and the job they do to help people through this difficult time. So I really do appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Attorney, and back to Alder Boss.
Thank you. One quick question regarding CARES Act money. Do we know how much that 95 million is designated or will be given on social services or community services, including homelessness? And the second question is, is there any additional funding available through state?
So the answer to your first question is that I am not aware of, of the county's plans for the use of, of that $95 million. They've been quite generous with respect to deploying it to support the, the work that's being done around the homeless services. But I, I don't know, other than what I see, which is what you see in, in terms of their other plans. So, so the city has received, by comparison, very modest increases through our Emergency Solutions Grant funding, where we'll receive about $570,000 in additional funds. And in an increase to our Community Development Block Grant Program allocation, where we are slated to receive an additional $1.1 million. It's, it's very likely the case that the, the ESG funds will be deployed to support some of the work that's being done now and other work that will occur to, to try to minimize the incidences of housing instability through eviction or, or non renewals. The state of Wisconsin receives its own allocation under the Emergency Solutions Grant Program. I believe it is in the neighborhood of $12.5 million. About a million and a half of that will likely flow to the Madison Dane County Continuum of Care. So the, the organizations that work in this space in, in the city and county will likely receive upwards of $1.5 million. Again, much of it will be deployed, I suspect, toward eviction prevention. I believe that there are additional state Community Development Block Grant Funds that would not normally be available to, excuse me, this, the city of Madison or, or any other city that receives its, its own direct allocation. But I believe that the, the guidelines that, that have come with that money may provide an opportunity for some of those funds to be used in the city. And that's something that, that Lynette and I are looking to follow up on.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Alder Boss. I have a quick question for either Jim or Lynette. For the Madison Metro, which I know right now is taking individuals out to Warner Park. How long is that going to continue? Is that till the end of May or what happens in June?
Well, we would, I mean, that transportation is such a critical part of the service that's being provided at, at Warner Park, that I would hope that it would be available for as long as we continue to operate the Warner Park facility. They're providing service not just to Warner Park, but they're providing service from Warner Park. The other endpoint on that trip is the Beacon, the daytime shelter. So it's critical to the, the continued success at, at Warner Park. And, you know, I can't tell you how long that operation will continue. But we recognize that that's not a long term strategy. We recognize that we need to find an alternative location. And, and we are, as I said, the mayor's directed us to, to, to find a, a location that we could turn to upon the closure of, of the Warner Park facility.
Thank you. And, and Lynette, maybe you can answer that. So the feedback that I'm getting from a lot of organizations is that there are people who really don't qualify for not paying their rent, that are not paying their rent. So based on the, the moratorium on that, so are you, are we preparing? And the bigger we, not we, the bigger we, preparing for an increase in evictions because of this?
Yes, I think, I think we're, we, the bigger we, so us and the county are, are looking at that. I, we are working actually very closely with Kurt Paulson from the University of Wisconsin. He, he's a professor there to start kind of trying to get at the, the actual like impact and risks that we have in our community. I think, you know, like, you know, through information that we have of how many unemployment claims have been filed and that kind of stuff, we are able to get a, a good scenario of what the impact is going to be. But then, you know, there's, there's all these outliers of, for instance, if people are collecting unemployment right now, they're also getting that $600 additional benefit. So, you know, you, you kind of have to look at all of that stuff in a, in a manner of, okay, some individuals do have the funds, even if their, you know, employment is, you know, low right now or they don't have any employment right now. But they are getting those unemployment claims to pay their rent, but they're choosing not to pay their rent. We have to look at these. We have to look at these programs in a kind of, what is COVID impacting? A lot of the stimulus dollars is going to be very COVID-related stimulus dollars. But looking at the overall impact in our community, I think this is our opportunity to really look at how our eviction programs operate, how we screen, and how we can offer a lot of support. I think this is our opportunity as well to look at people in our community that don't traditionally qualify for these programs. So people that, you know, for many different reasons can't access federal stimulus dollars. How are we kind of looking at different screening criteria and different approaches on how we can support those households as well? It's the opportunity for us to kind of just relook at everything and maybe not do the status quo as we have done before. And where's the, and actually have the data that supports how we're doing it.
Well, thank you very much. That answers my question. So thank you. Thank you both. This has been very beneficial and very enlightening on what our situation is and really looking forward to how we are going to work on this for the future, the immediate future and the future after that. So thank you both for coming to the meeting. Does anyone else have any questions for Lynette and Jim before they sign off? No. Well, thank you very much.
Sorry, it looks like Alder Hennig has a question.
Okay, Alder Hennig? Go ahead. Have you? There you go.
I was just going to ask, as far as the CDVG committee goes, have you been able to take care of most of the things that haven't been able to happen in those meetings? And wanted to let everybody else know that it looks like we are meeting next month. Is that correct? Okay, anything you wanted to bring up on that?
Who are you?
Either Lynette or Jim.
Okay. Lynette?
Just an overview of the seat. So, yeah, we have not been meeting, like other boards, committees, and commissions for the CDVG committee. We did have a couple items that ended up skipping our CDVG committee and going right to finance. But we had already kind of pre-taken them to the CDVG committee, so we knew you guys were going to support them. So we needed real estate and things like, and things are still happening in our community. So when we're putting money, like CDVG money, into the purchase of a property or something like that, we couldn't wait for June for our committee to start back up again. So we have had a couple of things that skipped our CDVG committee and went right to finance and then common council. We, though, will be meeting in June. And one of the things that we will, you know, start to look at and getting back on schedule is we have a request for proposals that we usually release around this time of year for affordable housing funds. So it's an opportunity for us to talk to our committee about the future of the affordable housing funds and the future of that RFP. We also are going to need to do public hearings for how we plan on utilizing our CDVG funds. So again, opportunities for us to talk to our committee about those things. So much-needed meetings that are about to happen.
Thank you very much, Lynette.
And Jim, did you have one last thing to say? Your hand is up.
Lynette put my hand down. She covered when I was.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay, if there's no more questions, then we're going to move on to item number seven. And I want to thank both Lynette and Jim once again for coming to our meeting and giving a really in-depth outlook on the services that we provide the homeless at this time of COVID-19. Any future agenda items that anyone, members, want to talk about? Alder Abbas? I thought I, here you go.
Here we go. Thank you. We all know Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan is moving forward with the community feedback through different committees. In July, it will come to Common Council for final approval. But beside the Oscar Mayer Special Area Plan, cities also, last year, city got $7.58 million federal grant to purchase building 4350 at location of Oscar Mayer. I would like to bring Tom Lynch and Brienne, I believe that's her name, the lady who reviewed the contamination. So I'll contaminate your city of Madison and I can send the information to, I can send to you, President Carter. I would like to bring them to the committee as a whole, in front of the whole committee, and review the whole process and also look with a view. Because the reason we chose that particular location was, not to go really more detail into that, was financial reason and cost-saving. So there's some questions around future projects, especially with contamination, how much it costs city, and either it still be affordable for city to move forward with that or not. So I will appreciate if we can bring them before they bring net of intent to Common Council.
Okay, thank you. Alder Hennig?
Yes, I just had two items. One was looking at the recent emergency order put out by, it wasn't an emergency order, but the mayor had said something about stopping all contracts that weren't already started and not filling positions that weren't already filled. And I would just like to see a list of the current open positions and which ones are being filled and which ones are being postponed or stopped at this point. And then also a list of the current contracts and ones that will and will not be moving forward. And I'm not sure if we need to have that, if we wanted to send that out to all Alders or if we wanted to bring it to this committee, whether it's the committee, the whole meeting, or the opposite. I don't have a preference there. I just thought that that was something that I would like to see here. And the other item was the review of the job description for the chief of staff and how we're progressing on that item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, if there's not any other items under future items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Alder Hennig?
So moved.
Do I have Alder Kimball?
Second.
It's been moved to second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you for spending your evening with me.
Great first meeting.
Thank you.